Exactly, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we have four board members here, so we have a quorum. Do we, do we receive the, oh, the official notices of meeting?
Yes.
Was done by Adam Licky, so new business, GI to Public Health's physical location. Are you pulling something up, Adam?
I'm trying to pull the map up. It's just, there you go.
There we go.
It's, it's just lagging.
Alright. So do you want to talk about what's happened so far?
Yeah, so per our discussion the very first time that we all met, we had looked at kind of the space in this area, kind of be where the green is at, was the minimum square footage if we want to get the price down to a certain threshold. When, after talking to most of you, the thought was that was too small of a footprint for what you wanted. The county, administrator-
I would say that was too small of a footprint for what GI Public Health needs.
Sorry, GI Public Health needs, that's my statement. There was discussion that that space there was a space that we could provide to ADP, it would also cut out our footprint a little bit, the square footage.
Can, can we go back, at least for the audience?
Yeah.
And talk about the, the boundaries here a little bit so people are familiar with what we're talking about?
Yeah, so this space is what we currently have, which is outlined in blue. That's our current square footprint, or footprint right now in this building. There is discussion about ADP needing a little bit of space for some of their staff, and I had discussion that we could give up that square footage there, which is in purple, and that would be what is the current, like, air quotes, lunchroom, and the space at the bottom, which is right here, that is the storage unit that, you know, if we had to, we can move some stuff around and make it work. That is generally square footprint, or square footage that we don't optimize, let me put it that way. Generally, the lunchroom they use is the one across the hallway, which is the public restroom, or sorry, lunchroom, and then the storage we do have in the basement that we can use that if we need it to. Lots of that, either desk for the E, or under the field, things like that. The county, and I had a discussion after that, that this square footage is what ideally they would like to have, which is the, currently, the bottom one right here is my office.
The yellow we're talking about.
Yeah, yellow, and then this area is E H Cube Farm, for lack of better words, there's about seven Santarians that sit there.
And what would that space be used for?
I believe ADP is, so I T would be what the county'd be using for, is my understanding. So I brought that to all of you at the last meeting, is if we gave up that square footage, and some of the staff went like a quasi-remote slash, I mean, land two days a week in the office, and during that discussion, my understanding is you, the board said, we can look at quasi-remote, but we still want to have a desk, each of their own desks to land at, if we decide not to do that for six months, or a year, or a day, if that matter. We went, I went back and looked at what other square footage we could give, that not give up, but to make ourselves a little more lean, given the, given the criteria that you mentioned at the last board meeting, and the only space I could really come up with is that. Given that if you want a desk for every person, and we do have the operation and maintenance program coming online, given your criteria, I'm not sure what other square footprint I can give up that still meets your criteria.
Who gets, who, is this still our space then?
Currently, yes.
But going forwards?
It would depend on what we, what we agree to.
You, you have green, and we have ADP up here.
Jump up, Lyndon.
Up here, and in the purple, and we're saying ADP needs this space now too?
No, I think, the original discussion, as far as I'm aware, and we can have Linda and Jerry talk here some, that was the space we had originally talked about with the county.
Right, right.
The space that during the last discussion I haven't done, this would be the ideal situation if they take that space instead.
Oh, versus the purple?
Versus the purple.
Okay.
That was my understanding. The, but as I said, the last meeting I had with all, all of you-
But that's not ideal for, for GI Public Health.
That was, that was the discussion we had last meeting, that yes, for the board, they, I think that was, it was no.
Yeah, what happens to this space right here?
We would still have that space.
So, green plus?
Yeah, likely what we'd have to do is we'd have to take, I mentioned this to Jerry and Linda, we'd probably have to take something like these two offices, and knock that wall down in the middle to turn it into one office, because my office serves also as our conference room, so if we still want a conference room, we'd have to knock down the wall to make it an office slash conference room, which I don't mind, I mean, the staff are in there anyways talking, but we would be down to not having a conference room if we didn't do that.
And then that would leave the one other office there from the yellow available.
Yeah, that would be Dan Lark's, given that he usually has conversations with staff, or if he's dealing with the public, usually, he's on the phone most of the day, or a lot of the day, I should say.
Are you talking about keeping the yellow or not keeping the yellow?
Well, that was the, that was the discussion with the county recently, was that would be the space that ideally they would, or I shouldn't say ideally, that was the space that they proposed they would take, it would cut our rent dollar down some numberwise, but when I brought that to most of you, the last board meeting, the discussion was that you want somewhere that people can land every day if they need to. If you say, hey, we'll do remote, and then we say after a month it doesn't work, they have to somewhere to land.
So-
It's not just your office, but that conference room gets you quite a bit?
Yeah, my, my office is used as a conference room a lot.
Right.
There's usually someone in there most on and off throughout the whole day.
How many, okay, assuming everybody's in cubes?
Yes.
All employees are in cubes, how many cubes do we need to cover if everybody were in the office?
Based on the criteria that you, the board gave me, at least 20. Because you have some supervisors that float, which we could, we could have them share, but the O and M program will add three staff likely, two Santarians and one clerk, just to meet the, the criteria of the program. It wouldn't be today, that's probably over the next two to three years, we'd add three people. One we need now.
So we could, we could be 23 people?
I would say 20 with those, yeah, I would say probably about 20.
With a, with a three.
Right now, you have, you know, I mean, if you count, if you count those, there's four there, there's eight up there, you have seven here, so 15, 21.
Wait, where are you counting?
Sorry, so-
I know up in the front, there's eight.
Yeah, so there's, there's seven, sorry, in this area, there's three on the side, two in the center, two on the side again, so that's five, and then you have-
The three?
You have four, right, you have three right now, the fourth we use, so that gets you to 11, and then we have another eight here. Now, these are the top ones where if a supervisor lands every day, you'd probably be closer to 25 cubicles, but again, you know, we can, I'm all ears for if we want a certain thing.
Well, I mean, we also need space we can grow in, we don't need just the space we need at this moment, I mean, we need to look three years down the road, five years down the road, and make sure that we have sufficient space for-
Correct, yeah, because right now-
The apartment looks like that.
Right now, the only spaces that we don't, that we don't have someone sitting at is there's one desk here.
Where?
The X, there's, this desk here is generally not used, and that one there, and then there is one right there, so there's four. We assume that we need three right now to fill with the upcoming Santarians and clerks. Every other space is filled or taken, and some of that is due to, we have some staff here more often than we thought they may be, due to Department Wells, due to a plethora of other things that we've been working on, so there, I mean, we're packed most days.
Okay, so if ADP is going in yellow, that is saying they don't want purple?
I believe so, yes, that was the conversation that-
So the purple space, which, but we don't really need the purple space.
We don't.
Well, we don't need, it's not-
It's not maximized.
It's not maximized at all.
So, I mean, we don't want to be paying for space that we don't feel is a maximum benefit.
Right.
Yeah, because right now, I mean, the main use of the purple area, so I'm going to say this upper purple area, is how you get to the bathrooms.
Right.
That's really the use of that space, is to walk over the bathroom. Now, there is a refrigerator and there is a microwave there, don't get me wrong, but your average person that walks through there is going to the bathroom.
And the room there right below that is basically storage?
Yes, yeah, we use that for overflow. The storage unit here, I think someone asked last time, that is where we put our vital statistics, things like, things that need lockdown, so that's a FOB thing, you can't just get, nobody can get into it except about three of us, so that's very lockdown stuff. The other one is more of overflow for health education goods, or there's some computer I T stuff in there, a little bit of everything.
Okay, if A T, if ADP moves into the yellow area, okay, do they need storage, additional storage?
I, that was not my understanding, no, they would just need that yellow space.
Oh, they do need that purple, that, oh, just yellow?
Just, yeah, it was either or, is my, is my understanding now, but when Jerry and Linda talk, they can, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for them, but that's my understanding, it was either or.
And their ADP's proposed plan for that space is for equipment?
I, I don't, I mean, I think it's, I guess it's personnel, but I, I don't want to speak for them.
We can let them talk in a minute. I mean, one question I have is about the security of the Health Department if we're adding ADP in.
Well, so where are the doors?
Yeah, so there was discussion that doors, I know this red's going to go away in a second, but there'd be doors to some degree that would close off, it may actually just be, sorry, it may just be this one is, this, sorry.
The bottom one?
Yeah, just the bottom one, I believe, and then the rest, the doors that are already being added, like there, would still be there. There is some sort of door down there. The only oddity, or the only exception may be somewhere in the bathroom area, if we have our own flow out that goes that way, but honestly, ADP's HIPAA trend is my understanding, not to mention they have access to all of our digital files, so if-
So maybe it's not that bad.
I mean, if we have a problem with ADP, we have far bigger problems in this county, then is there a door next to the bathroom?
Well, I mean, I, I'm not worried about ADP so much as, I, I didn't know what the-
Yeah, I, I just-
What our requirements are as far as HIPAA and so forth.
Well, I think, I think the purple, the upper purple minus storage should just be common use for everybody, and we should not be paying for that.
Oh, sorry, last-
That, that would be, that would be common space for whoever wants to use microwave, refrigerator, restaurant.
Well, maybe at this point, we should have the Commissioner's office and ADP.
One, one other quick question. Well, two parts to it, are there GIU account employees outside of this main building here that are looking for space, or is there space that exists from either here or some other site, and it, are there plans for some other site? Because isn't there a plan to clear out from the old?
That, I, that I don't know.
Yeah, 470, you mean?
Right.
Oh, right now, I think it's Department of Aging is there, or Senior, it's not even Seniors?
Senior Center.
Senior Center, thank you, but I don't, yeah, I don't know their plans for it, I guess I have some other plans for it. My understanding is that was, that was not going to be there long-term though, yes.
But there's not space here for any of those needs?
I don't think so.
I don't believe so, I mean, I-
And are there plans for other property being developed or purchased?
I don't know.
Yeah, well, the Commissioners have been going into executive session to discuss purchasing property on Sharton Square, is my understanding.
Okay.
But I don't know where they are in that process.
Okay, just to make sure I have the numbers, we have how many staff right now?
Trying to think of your guys.
Well, two, I guess, right, plus a bunch of contractors.
I guess that's what's, that's my head up, like, I'm counting everybody up, because I know, I think what you're asking is how many people are in that space, that's what you're really asking, right? Or how many GIU public employees are in?
How many GIU public employees do we?
So you have two GIU public employees, those are the vital stats.
Okay.
That's what I was asking.
That, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, okay, so you're asking general space.
This is paid by G P H.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have three, four- So you have, uh, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Probably twenty-two.
Plus the two vital stats or?
With, with the two vital stats, yeah.
That's, and that's current employees, that would not include the extras.
That would not include the extras.
And the total number coming on board are just three?
Probably three. I mean, it, so, given that Geogu has the, this first or second most septic system, number of septic systems in any county in Ohio.
Right.
The program is, I mean, we're gonna set the record kind of for how the program is done at this level. So when you talk about personnel, which is what we're wrapping back to, why we talk about this, we talk about the personnel. We're, Dan Lark and I, Lark and I right now are assuming two sanitarians and one clerk. That could vary a little bit, and we did talk about adding a clerk, at least a part-time, not full-time clerk to assist Dan and I with all the stuff that right now we can't get to on a daily basis.
So that makes three point five.
Probably, yeah, I mean, and again, when, when some of the things settle down and they more even out, we may drop a person or two because they may be at like ninety-nine percent of the time they're here just on occasion.
Okay.
But right now, as we're going through like the House Bill one-ten, cleaning that up amongst other things, there's more people here than would be normal.
But by House Bill one-ten, we're a bit behind in all those?
We, we are fully caught up on that, um, as of, I think it was the end of last year, or beginning, it was beginning this year, sorry, middle like first, second quarter of this year. But we're still going back to figure out whether we do those records that are downstairs, scanning them, not scanning them, and then we're launching the operation maintenance program, which is, I, it's, it's a full-time job for about three people right now, that would normally not maybe be here every single day, it's just that program. Uh, we've been talking with the county all over, the, mostly the treasurer recently, and then the county commissioner's office, that's been a full-time job for about three people.
Adam, are you counted in as twenty-two?
Mm-mm. Yeah.
Okay, so we, should we hear from the commissioner's office?
Yeah, I think it'd be good, I mean, they, cause they, I don't want to speak for them, I just don't, it works in their mouth.
Hey, Adam?
Yes?
Can you, can we get a couple more copies of this?
Yeah.
Top of ones?
Yeah.
Before we go on?
Oh.
I think people want to take notes.
Okay, I'm just gonna make copies.
Sorry, my notes are on.
Yeah, we can move, I have this one too, I've got that's all over the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to answer Dr. Hendrickson's questions, the, the county is looking at additional space, uh, both on the square and outside, outside of the city to clear out, basically to clear out four seventy, so that we, cause we've got a lot of interest in, in someone, in people purchasing that property. So we're trying to get that cleared out, so that's the, that would include the senior center, CASA, the Board of Elections who will be coming to this building and, um, that's it for the, yeah, that's, that's, that's four seven, that's clearing out four seventy. The yellow space that we're looking at actually is additional ADP personnel who are currently up on the square to be able to come down here and be, gonna pull the entire ADP department together into one location. That's, that's, that's the purpose of the additional ADP space.
Is there always the intention to leave people in four seventy?
No, we, we, the intention was we were going to sell four seventy when this was all done. However, because of the lawsuit with Board of Elections and the additional work we had to do downstairs, they're not gonna be able to move in until after the April, the March or April primary next year.
So if everybody out of four seventy was supposed to move and you're looking at space, it was never intended to be into this building? I mean, this building wasn't built large enough?
The only one, well, the senior center was originally supposed, was not supposed to go back to four seventy. It was, the, the senior center was cleared out of next door Ravenwood when, uh, the Ravenwood, uh, mental health or, I'm trying to, with the Ravenwood Company bought the rest of the building, which was the, was the Chardon Senior Center. They were temporarily at, put back at four seventy because of the cost of building for, at the time that they were no longer in the rent there. So that was, so now we're trying to get them back out of four seventy to a different location.
Okay, so is it safe to say the building we're sitting in was not built with any extra space?
That is correct.
And the, the property or buildings or plans for the future will accommodate your anticipated, expected current and recurrent needs for personnel?
Yes, the, that's the, the plan, is the additional space still getting is, is to deal with four seventy and for some of the stuff on the square.
And where in the township, what, is there a known property or?
Yes, where it's currently a vacant property in the township, we're still in negotiations, so I don't want to necessarily put that out there.
It was always intended that the senior center would have a new building and they began preparing for that. But when the numbers came back about what that was gonna cost and when we started looking for a location for it, the amount of money it was gonna cost even just to prep the site, then we started looking for an alternative and we're in the midst of that now. In hopes, we're hoping by next summer four seventy will be empty, that's the goal.
And the square footage you're anticipating of purchasing is?
For building.
For the senior center right now is, is eight thousand, eight hundred square feet.
Eight one, eight one hundred.
That would just house the senior center.
And the square footage of this building is what?
Hundred and ten thousand, yeah.
And I apologize, while you're all talking, I'm gonna pass these down, these are the MOUs we signed last time, they need the actual original sign, not copies that we had for you, so I just need you to sign these again, just while we're all talking. The gentlemen should be here tonight together, so I apologize.
Oh, that's fine.
Uh, last agent all.
So what is, what's the current proposed rent amount?
The.
Per square foot?
Current ra, amount is eight dollars a square foot, which is based off of the cost to build this building.
Um, so the, the cost to build it for the taxpayers?
The, yes.
All right, I'm gonna ask a question that I probably should know the answer to, but I want clarity. Who, when this building, when it was decided to build this building, who really pays for this building? The taxpayers or the people that are in the building, organizations in the building?
The taxpayers pay the bill, pay, will pay the bill, cause it's all, it's all tax dollar money from, no matter where it's coming from.
So why do we have to pay rent? We never paid rent in the past in the other buildings.
Cause it's, it's, we have a bond that we took out to build this building and that's, we have pay month, or yearly payments we have to make on that, so that's the basis of the rent.
But you could pay off the bill, the bond if you wanted to, you have enough money in the bank.
We do not have enough money in the bank to pay it off at this point.
Don't you have eighty million dollars in unencumbered cash?
No, that is, that is, that is a fact, there's eighty million dollars of unencumbered cash in the county.
Yeah.
But that is not general fund money.
Okay, so you couldn't.
That's, that's, that, that would include money that the health district has, the, you know, other departments that, that, when that, when, when those numbers get referenced in the budget commission, there, those are, those are numbers that are all funds in the county, which includes, you know, every, every department, every agency.
Okay, cause, I mean, when I listen to the budget hearings, it sounded like that was in the general fund, was eighty million of unencumbered cash.
No, it is not.
So how much of unencumbered cash is there in the general fund?
Off the top of my head, I do not know that, I would.
I mean, I understand you probably have investments where you're making more than what you're paying in interest on your bond, but, you know, effectively, I, I would think you could just pay off the bond.
Yeah, based on our original numbers when we ran back, you know, when we started this process, we did not have the funds to be able to pay upfront for it.
Okay, um.
And there, because there is, there is a portion of that mon, of that unencumbered funds that is, it's, they're unencumbered, but they're expected to be utilized for the expansion of the courthouse.
Okay, um, and so the eight dollars a square foot, that's based on your interest rate?
That eight dollars a square foot was based off of the construction costs.
So that's the construction cost.
That does not include any utilities or anything.
So then how long do we have to pay rent for?
Uh, the numbers, that number is based off of the, the, no, I, I use thirty years, it's, our, our bond is actually forty years, but I use thirty years to do that calculation.
Okay, so we don't have to pay for thirty years, that's what I heard.
Yeah, that, then that would be the plan is that.
And then it goes to zero?
Once the bond's done, then, then we would not do the rent. And I, I will answer a question I'm sure will be coming up, not every department is paying rent.
Correct.
There are, there are departments that are under the general fund, so it's kinda silly to charge them rent when we're giving them, when the county is giving them the money to pay the rent. It's not, you know, it's, they're not, they're not o, other entity, you know, so.
Well, I mean, this is still like putting it in one pocket and taking out, putting it in the other pocket, it's all taxpayer dollars in the county, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's different funds with the county for where the, where that money is.
But that's what I'm saying, it's like one, two pockets in the same pants, so.
And the rents also vary.
But it's based off of square foot, but there are, there are, there are other departments.
The rents per square foot apparently vary.
Well, I think it was BMV, right, spit?
BM, BMV is separate as a state entity, we had to have that contract together before we really even started construction on this building, or we were working on that. They're being charged sixteen dollars a square foot.
So are they gonna get a lower rent number, are they gonna get to eight dollars now?
No, the, the, the deal we have with them is a five-year deal and it's automatic renewals and it's remaining at sixteen dollars.
So you're charging everybody eight dollars a square foot, everyone else?
Well, it should be, with us, it's soil and water, which may be different, it's quarter, I think you said, then there's veterans which pay, and I think there's somebody else, right?
Yeah, the, the, the only entity that is not the general fund that is not paying rent is title. And the reason why they are not is cause they, they provided seven hundred fifty thousand dollars towards the cost of the building upfront, so.
Soil and water's paying thirteen fifty-nine a square foot.
Okay, soil and water, and they're.
And they're, that's, they're locked in up in a lease agreement for that?
That is, that is what they're, we're working on the lease agreement with them on this, because, you know, that was just a carryover basically from what they were paying the county when they were out at the Patterson Center. They kept, they, they wanted, they wanted to keep that same, that, that same rate because of the way that their funding comes from the state.
What are you charging veterans?
Yeah, veterans and.
Veterans, veterans is not, is not being charged, they're, they're funded by the general fund partially also.
JFS and Department of Aging and Water Resources and Community Development are all paying rent through the cost allocation program that we have and it, it comes out at about eight dollars a square foot for each of them.
When we first talked about veterans was gonna pay rent too, when Lynn and I spoke with you, they were one of the ones listed as paying rent.
I'm not aware of them paying rent.
Yeah, they're, they are not paying rent at this time.
I don't know if they do cost allocation or not for them, I could look into that though.
What's the cost allocation program?
It's basically all the costs that it, that, for the operation of those departments gets determined based, and it's rent, that utilities, uh, their use of the prosecutor's office, the use of the auditor's office, the use of all general fund offices. There's a portion of that that comes back to refund the general fund for their.
So does that eight dollars a square foot include utilities? What does that include?
Yeah, that was my next question.
That does not, that does not include utilities, however, we were planning on, you know, for, you know, health district and others is leaving it at eight dollars and.
Okay.
Not worrying with the.
If I may have just a question of concern, uh, health commissioner here, and we have to do public health accreditation, it's five years. Uh, it's about thirty-five thousand dollar fee to get through that program, they're accredited, we need to maintain that, we're in year two. Um, maybe three more years, we've got three new, but part of it is a site visit, if you change locations during that time. And definitely like a security, uh, physical press meeting room, which is a federal requirement for the building and, uh, security. So I, we gotta be sure that we have those safeguards in place, uh, or we would lose our accreditation status potentially. So I'm just kinda curious how many more people are planning to come in, permanently reside in this facility and if you have the required press meeting rooms that the federal law requires?
We do have the required rooms, uh, we actually just had a meeting with the Department of Homeland Security who came through and did a walkthrough on the whole building, we're, we're awaiting their report. To see if there's any deficiencies in our security.
I mean, I think the other thing we're concerned about was the generator, cause it was our understanding that there was a power outage and that, that did not, the generator did not click on the HVAC.
It doesn't cover HVAC.
Correct, the generator is, the generator is set up to run everything except for the HVAC. Although there are, there are certain portions of the, of the, the building, like the, uh, the IT rooms all have separate HVAC that's separate from the depart, from the buildings and those are covered by, those are connected, the generator.
So if we have a power outage and it's zero degrees outside, we don't have any backup for heat? And if we end up with ninety degree, we have no backup for air conditioning?
We have a vaccine, not fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's what I worry about.
I think your room is covered, I asked Glenn that and I thought he said it is covered by the, by the generator, but I can double check that.
The small standalone Mississippi unit is, but as we, if we open the doors, so we keep the doors shut, like during that outage, we kept all the doors shut, so we didn't go to get any vaccine. If those doors are open, the hot air or vice versa, cold air would come in. So, and we put the, the Mississippi unit got put in after the fact, because the standalone unit did not, uh, cover that area and we actually lost one of our freezers due to that.
Okay.
Uh, we got too hot during the temperatures.
And how much did the freezer cost?
I wanna say that one was eight or ten thousand dollars was the limit that was lost, off the top of my head.
Right, and it's not the cost of freezer, it's.
It's what's in it.
It's what's in it, that's critical.
It is.
Especially nowadays, what we've been through recently with viral diseases, what's going on now and what's probably gonna happen in the future. So we need to know, not kind of know.
I understand.
If, yeah, so the concern would be if, if the power goes out and it's, let's say it's eighty degrees outside, it's eighty degrees in the building. If the doors get open to the vaccine room, that cold air's only, if it's a cyclic.
No, 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 I understand.
Yeah.
So what are we gonna do, what do we do when it's too hot or too cold in here for employees? Cause we have a responsibility.
We do follow OSHA, so I think it's sixty, sixty, seventy or sixty-eight degrees to seventy-four degrees, off the top of my head, it's somewhere, isn't that?
So they have to go home now if?
They would have to, yes, for liability's sake, they would have to.
Higher or lower than that?
It's higher or lower.
But we're on, for paying for them?
Absolutely, yes, I mean, that would be, that would be on us. Um, the last time we did keep them in here, uh, I was actually ironically out of town with that day that it happened. Um, and Dan Lark made the decision, uh, which I think was right, that most of them were out in the field, so we stayed and just had fans on and whatnot, but it, you know, it was, it was close, we'd probably probably send them home next time. But again, I mean, the HVAC wasn't on the generator, so we just kinda assumed it was gonna kick in and that was the thought process to acknowledge it was not. So, but I still think you made the right decision, I think Dan made the right decision to keep them here for that day. In the future, I think we, knowing now we know, it's never gonna kick out, we'd send them home, if, if it fell outside the OSHA standards, not just send them home, but outside those standards.
There are, there's like three signatures in each one of these.
I need some more information, is the generator house, the generator powered, cast or?
I'm guessing it's diesel, most of them are diesel.
That's probably a natural gas line, isn't it?
I believe it's a natural gas.
Yeah, it's probably a natural gas line.
So is there plans to put a, a fixed and have backup generator for heating HVAC?
Not at this time.
It's a million bucks, so probably not.
I was just kinda curious where EMA plays, I mean, this is, we're kind of in the needs of operation, coup planning, we have some federal requirements, we have a dead state for preparedness. Some of that is to make sure we have a dedicated facility with HVAC and generator on those checklists, so I'm not sure EMA, might as well better not.
I think EMA has their own in the back, I, I don't know where it runs off of theirs.
Well, that'd be like joint command, so this, our operations center would be here, at this building, in that room, in our room.
Yeah, right now we don't wanna get out of EMA when we do anything joint, but yeah, for, for us, standalone, no, no, we'd have, we wouldn't have a space.
Yeah.
If, if, if it was like power without.
So are we, not, I'm not, I'm not necessarily agreeing to rent, but if we, if we get into an agreement, are we on a one-year agreement?
Uh, we would probably do it in a, as a five-year agreement with automatic renewals with a out, name and notice out.
And what happens if we truly run out of space? If we, if we shrink, if we, if we say yes to giving up space and we run out of space, what are we supposed to do?
I'm just three, four. Uh, we can work with you to try to find additional space if need, you know, wherever we can, whether it's in other, other county buildings or, you know, within this building and we go to other departments and see what we can do.
So what happens if the board doesn't approve the lease agreement?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
In the, in the space that you're looking at building in the future, is there space that would be more accommodating for the public health department than the space we're currently sitting in? Or is it very specific to a particular function?
The, the, the only space we're looking at building right now is the addition to the courthouse, which is. directed towards the operation of, of courts and that senior center, which we're actually looking at an existing building, which had, only has the space for the senior center at this point.
I guess I'd have a question. There's several grants coming up for renewal, uh, for the state, they're five-year grants. Theoretically, we'd have to add two or three staff easily overnight for, we gotta get the, like, GM grants for, uh, for the communities. So what are we gonna do with that case if we were successful in that grant acquisition?
Again, we'd have to look and see what we can figure out.
Yeah, I think my, my other question, I guess, is why now? Like, why are we being asked for rent now? And I, I know Lynn really wanted a number before we moved in, if there was a number, and we didn't get it. So, I mean, how long have we been here? A year now?
Year and three, four months.
Yeah, so why are we, why are we being asked for rent now?
Yeah, who's pushing for rent? You, commissioners? Tell me.
The, the discussion was always that we would go, go to a rent, you know, for everybody, um, or for, you know, the departments that are outside of the general fund. Um, and, you know, how we approve those would be, it was just trying to get to a final number. You know, looking at what the cost was, didn't wanna charge anybody, you know, if we, if there was change orders that, that were put in because of, you know, specific departments. Didn't want that to be, you know, to be the, those departments. It was trying to get to an actual number on what the cost would be.
Who was that discussion with? Because I've sat on the board and I don't remember that coming to the board for discussion. Now, maybe I don't remember, but who was that discussion over?
Uh, most of that discussion was with your former, uh, health commissioner.
Tom.
During the, during the initial construction of the project, the designs of the project.
Tom, Thomas Blake.
Yes. Sorry, I couldn't remember his name.
Um, do you guys have any more questions? I mean, I guess, you know, I think our frustration as we were forced to leave four seventy, um, it wasn't an option. Uh, and now we're in a space that none of the current leadership had any input in designing. It doesn't suit our needs in a lot of ways. And, um, we're just being given kind of a number that, you know, we haven't seen any calculations or justification for. So I, I think, uh, would you guys agree with that, that, that that would be a good characterization of our frustration?
Yes, at least for me. Um, considering when discussions got here and we said, what is the rent number gonna be? What's the rent number? I mean, we never, we never had a discussion that said, you now have to pay, you're gonna have to pay rent. Okay, and you're in the old building. I don't remember that. But then even when we did ask for rent numbers, we weren't getting rent number expectations. And yours, and I don't have my calculator here, but you said that this building is eight dollars a square foot. Okay, I have to go back and find a calculator, do that to figure out this building, what it costs. But I'm just, I'm just frustrated because.
It'd be like twenty-six million, a little over twenty-six million dollars. Hundred, uh, so it means a hundred and ten thousand square feet times eight bucks square for that, times thirty years. Given, that was average, I think, I think they used.
So, so we have to go back. We have, we, for us to raise the money, we have, with raise money, we would have to put more than the renewal on. We would have to eventually put a levy increase on. Is that, is that correct?
You're, more than likely, yes. And we'd also raise all of our fees too. So all the fees back, because EH is mostly funded, which is the majority of the health industry is funded by fees. And the grants can't absorb them. Most of the grants are already maxed out.
I mean, we don't got much in grants to.
We have two or three grants and they're usually, they're large in terms of, in terms of like, you know, your whole budget, but they're small in terms of what a grant is.
Right. And I, and I, I know that if you look at our overall numbers, it looks like we have, we're flushing cash. But I don't know that people realize that if we have a East Palestine situation, we need that money to take care of emergencies.
Well, I mean, so the example I always use, cause this is the example that we lived in late, was when we had the fire that destroyed a building and the items inside of it. The, the assumption from the insurance company was you had all that money in reserves. You spent the money, then you got the money back. We didn't have that. And it was, it was a, one in a million of how they made it work out instead.
Well, and we don't have that much in, in unencumbered cash anymore, do we? I mean, with everything we've spent on HVAC.
I mean, well, one million dollars, they'll go out with House Bill one-ten, uh, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, roughly, uh, it's about a million dollars.
We settled for the contract and then twenty-four budgets already submitted.
Right, for sale of property, the money's not been coming in, because obviously we ended that program for multiple reasons. Uh, operation management's not up and running yet. Estimate revenue source to be, for the rest, probably attorney to help, will be that, you know, foreseeable future. And then late, when late bills for the first six months, I mean, that's gonna be a, a heavy hit. Um, part of it was to get the appropriations in place, part of it was make sure it was working properly. And now, you know, with everything open, we'll start billing.
Well, and with property taxes going up with these property values increasing, that's gonna hit the general fund, but that doesn't hit our levy. That's my understanding, that that only hits inside mileage. Is that how you guys understand it with the, the increase, that thirty percent is going up with property values?
That is my understanding, that it would just be inside leverage until, until a levy, until a levy is renewed.
Right. Yeah, so the commissioner's office will get that additional thirty percent in the general fund, but like our levies are, will be, will stay the same.
Anyway, well, I'm like, I think one of you had asked me last meeting or I think it was during the opening was, you know, will we went out for a higher levy, probably?
Right, if we knew this ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, that's, cause I, our total square footage, um, I think you were recalculating the number, but it was like fifty-eight thousand or something in that area. Assuming we didn't go anything, not the purple, not the blue, or sorry, not the yellow, we didn't go the green, we just kept the same square footage.
What was it, what was it to give up the purple, just?
I think it was like fifty thousand roughly.
So that wasn't fifty thousand.
If we got rid of the purple areas, it down to like fifty thousand.
I believe so, yes.
Something like that. I know it was a ballpark. It wasn't, it wasn't like a, like, here's your exact number.
So our whole space is approximately sixty-five hundred, which I would like to verify, but that's the number, sixty-five, and then when we take out the purple, we're down to fifty?
It'd be like fifty thousand, yeah.
Fifty-three hundred, not fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three hundred, yes.
You're sorry, we're mixing dollars with square footage.
Yes.
The original square footage that was on there was including, I think, the ADP space, so this, for those that don't recall, this space over here.
The numbers that I ran did not include the ADP space.
Okay, so that was.
I believe it did not include the purple either.
Okay, that was.
And that was fifty-three hundred and, and I had to know this is subject to.
That's the square footage, like fifty-three hundred?
And it came to forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Forty-two thousand dollars worth of rent. Okay, I did take my phone out of the wall and get my calculator, no. So, so forty-two, roughly forty-two to forty-three thousand dollars a year. No utilities.
Correct.
By that you mean we're not charging extra for utilities?
No. But do we have any idea how much our utilities are for this area?
Check them separately.
Yeah, do we track utilities separate that you can tell us?
No, they're giving them to us for free.
Right, but I'd still like to know.
Two dollars and twenty-one cents a square foot.
Thank you.
Based on the first year in the building.
But that's, that's assuming everyone used the same.
That's taking a whole, that's taking a whole, whole amount of utilities.
Yeah.
So try, or divided by the square foot, which is not, yeah.
Power.
I was gonna say, what are you paying for power? Per kilowatt hour?
I don't know, wasn't it like five cents or something?
I, yeah.
I haven't been here all but three months, so.
I'd have to go back and look at those numbers. I don't remember what it was. We're in the middle of a three-year.
Who's, who's your contract with?
It's with, um, it's through CCAO, it's with Palmer Energy.
What is it, Palmer?
Palmer.
I'm not familiar with that.
I go with the county commissioners.
It's through the county commissioners.
Yeah. Yeah, CCAO is there. They have its own insurance and everything too.
Okay, so that's an outside, that's a broker that there is a problem.
That's roughly, if I, if I've got all the right numbers, it's roughly eleven thousand seven hundred utilities, so.
Okay.
If we were, if we were to do utilities.
That was for the, the blue space, the, which?
Yeah, that's everything but the purple, based on fifty-three hundred.
That's kinda the ideal.
It doesn't count the purple.
Yeah, fifty, based on fifty-three hundred square feet.
Okay.
Subject to being double, triple checked.
Right.
All right, any other questions, folks, up here?
Is the, the bond agreement or contract letter available to the public?
I'm sorry, with the.
The bond agreement for this building, is that available?
He's asking for the public record, just to come to the bond.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be public record.
All right, and I also had Frank, he has a new chief of ADP off, ADP office here. Uh, there was a question that you guys had for him last time as well. So I, I mean, I don't have to give any questions to the board, but I just wanna make sure, you know, he's here as well.
So.
Given there were questions I couldn't answer.
So, right now, just for clarity, the proposal is that ADP would get the yellow in addition to their current space.
That's my understanding, Mel, Lynn and Jerry.
And then the storage.
Frank's shaking his head. So, yeah, do you have to add, I think?
No. Well, first, let me say, um, if it wasn't for the board, if it wasn't for Adam, I'd have thirteen people in two offices and one storage room right now, so your generosity, I mean, can't thank you enough. I think I thank Adam on about a monthly basis and really do appreciate that. And you've been nothing but incredibly helpful and supportive and, and public health has been wonderful. You're great neighbors too, so, uh, we certainly appreciate our relationship.
Yeah, we'll let you get to the bathroom, sorry.
And the bathroom's too, which is a big deal. In terms of the space you've already provided us, I mean, again, we're so thankful, we wouldn't have had that otherwise. And I know Adam went to bat big time and helped us out. And then, um, the board was obviously very instrumental, so we certainly appreciate that. In terms of what I've talked about with Adam, is that purple space up there. And, and I had even talked to him earlier, I said, look, you've already done, you know, way too much. I, I'm not, I can't, I'm not even comfortable asking at this point because of how generous the board is about. But Adam had said, well, we don't really use that space. It's kind of more of a pain. And, you know, Adam and I, and I think Lynn, we, we were at a meeting about a year and a half ago, like two years ago, and kinda said, the way that this space is configured does not necessarily look ideal for health. And we sort of recommended a door being put elsewhere and then maybe repurposing. And then even when the TVs were put in with the webcams and the tables, it just, it just was never going to work. And I know that, you know, Adam's done some work in there. I think we moved some TVs and tried to help out with that, but I know it's still kind of an odd room right there. But, but obviously it's space and a building that, that, you know, space is premium right now. So we had talked about potentially partitioning that area there to a small kitchenette, which we currently don't really have. We just have a refrigerator, um, next to our copier in our room. And, uh, and then sort of coordinating off some office space over there too, and then potentially that storage room. That's the last discussion, um, that we had sort of got serious about. Linda Brannie was, was super helpful. She got in a contractor. We even looked at some work that could be done to make that work. And I think it, it looked good to everybody and I think it fit in with her needs. Um, the yellow portion was recently presented. Um, if health didn't want that, um, you know, we certainly wouldn't let it go to waste. But I'm very comfortable with the, the purple space up there. It would not be in favor of asking you for anything beyond that because generosity.
And the purple space, you're gonna convert it to offices?
So we could get a, a solid office for sure, the storage room, and then two offices, uh, which, so one of the issues is I don't, uh, currently have an office in this building. I've been in the conference room that we've used as a staging area, um, since, uh, January of two thousand twenty-one, which just sort of sticks over there. So I've just kinda been working out there, so I, I would like to have an office at some point. Um, but at the same time, I understand those are premium, so we would double my office as a storage space for all our technology and hardware. So we would use, we'd essentially get three office spaces out of that, a small kitchenette, and then a hardware storage area for new, uh, machines that have not been imaged and taken out.
You'll get all that in the purple space?
It's gonna be tight, but it's better than.
And, and Frank, that space will work, will work for you too. It sounds like there's, you have professionals in the square or at four seventy that would be moved?
So we have four to six people at the annex right now. We would always keep probably two up there, uh, because we do service that area and that has, uh, you know, roughly a hundred and seventy users. This building has two hundred and twenty sub-users. But then this building also gives us proximity to, um, the west side a little bit easier than coming from Chardon. So we would always have a footprint up there, but I think the issue questions the opera house right now, where we have on any given day, two to four users, depending on if our seasonal students are in or not. Uh, right now we have three up there and we have a vacant position for somebody who's not, not brought in yet, um, for new world support. Uh, but with the elevator being the situation it's in, I know the commissioners are wanting to get out of the, the third floor area, which the third floor is particularly bad up there. The back wall doesn't seal up at the roof. It's, it's, um, it's a, a rough area. So I, I don't think when we're talking about the square area, we're talking about the entire thing, because I always wanna leave some staff up there. But we're talking about the opera house in particular, and that is one that I think everybody has wanted to vacate for a long time.
So would it be fair to say that public health would prefer to keep the yellow?
Uh, basically guidelines that was given by the board. I, I think we'd have to, I was, I can meet your criteria.
Evidence of, where he's a management, as all of us, it's, it's critical that manager, directors have office with HIPAA and the ethics violations and things that he makes.
Yeah, and just personal, personnel confidential conversations. You guys have lots of things you don't want everyone to hear.
You know, what's going through my mind right now is how does, how's the workforce look in the future for, you know, we've been in a lot of flexible people. You know, everybody used to have offices or cubicles, or used to have, you know, a place. And then we go to COVID and all of a sudden, everybody's working different since COVID. The question is, is how different does the world continue to work? I'm also thinking about how the demands for IT continue to grow over time. You know, I, I guess where I'm really at is I, I, I can't answer to what does the workforce and the requirements look like in the future? But I think IT will continue to grow. I mean, you know, if I, if I had my way, I'd put a fourth floor and show, so that if we needed space, um.
I can't tell you what it would be in thirty years or fifteen years.
Right.
But for the foreseeable five years, barring another pandemic, I anticipate that we need space. There's, there's just.
And I just see IT growing over time, yeah.
There's so much that a team can do virtually.
Right.
There needs to be, in order to have a cohesive team, there needs to be the ability to come to, into an office all at the same time, at times.
Okay.
And I don't know if this is fair enough, but it seems that industries, companies, businesses at different size level, one of the things they agree upon is with this experience in COVID, the productivity wasn't quite what they had hoped for. And the ability to communicate and progress. And there's, seems to be a big push trying to get people back into.
At least a five days a week. Or a calendar.
I mean, that's why I brought it to you as a board, because obviously, I mean, I, I don't make, I don't have that authority to make those level decisions. And I think that was the, from the last meeting, that was a resounding conversation. So I mean, I've been looking at stuff since, since that meeting. But to, to meet your criteria, besides the purple space, I'd have to use the entire area. I mean, to meet your, to meet the criteria.
Well, to go from no rent to all of a sudden roughly forty-five thousand dollars of rent a year is just a big.
Yeah, I mean, we have a small budget, so that's, that takes up a lot of it.
We get.
So Jerry, can we negotiate the rent?
We get five dollars per hundred thousand valuation on the levy, five dollars. We have a point two.
Point two mil.
Mill levy.
Small.
The lowest levy in the county. We get perhaps six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Fluctuates, yeah.
Roughly, per year. We, we, we have to lose change that falls out of pockets of other parts of the county. And we subside on that. We, we do good things with that. We use that to its best advantage. But it's, we are by levy the least funded, um, department. So what we end up having to do is put a lion's share of our revenue based on the fees that we collect, the services that we provide. But we can't significantly increase public health, um, costs for needed things like vaccines and caring for the Amish population. Those often cost us, um, rather than the revenue sources. So it turns to then environmental health as the lion's share of our income.
Yeah, and a number of those funded mandates.
Yeah, appropriate programs. So state for unemployment programs give you about thirty-four cents per capita. National average is five. If you're not accredited.
Five dollars.
Yeah, five dollars, I'm sorry.
We get thirty-four cents.
Yeah, uh, if you're not accredited, it's. Yeah, and if you're not accredited, it's 19 cents, so, you know.
So we want to keep our accreditation?
Yeah. Maybe break even, but hopefully down the road, funding shifted to those that are accredited.
It doesn't appear that federal governments keep providing the funds.
We, like Ron mentioned, we have one of the lowest funding sources in the country for public health, in the state, like not, in the state. So we have very low funding.
Specifically, the CDC funding on top of it, so, or so, other grants.
Right.
I work with UH to change that.
Yeah, and we've done everything we can to maximize every dollar we can. I don't lower fees to lower fees, but obviously, we lowered some because our, the revenue they generate was more than the cost that it did, that would cost a service. We reduced some, food went up some, that's because the state's no longer offsetting those dollars. But it's a wash, it's time for getting more than we bring in, it's either covering your costs. That levy that's, you know, 20 years old, you know, salaries have gone up over that time. And obviously, right now, we have a heck of a time keeping nurses because we don't compete with hospitals. I mean, we were never meant to, and we don't.
First, the death records, a lot of money out of those books actually gets receiveded back to the state, we collected, had lost to get the money.
Because we, and because we are a healthy county by and large, we don't qualify for some of the health grants that patients, or counties with greater social determinants of health needs are able to attract. So our ability to get outside funding is limited, especially since the end of the, since they declared the end of the pandemic.
So what happens if we choose not to sign, excuse me, an agreement?
Well, that's a question I asked, right? Yeah.
I can't answer that question right now, because I.
What if I propose a block a square foot?
I was gonna answer your question from before, is it negotiable? Yes, we can further negotiate on that to try to figure out, you know, what might be unacceptable.
And in context, and this has been in the public news, and I'm not trying to be an alarmist, but most likely, the next health crisis is going to be a virus that has been programmed to be selective in the people that it affects. There's a country working on to develop genetically patterns. Sorry?
Targeting.
Right, so they're targeting specific populations. And if it comes out, the next health crisis is going to be a humongous disaster.
I gotta retire before it happens, I'm just telling you.
You'll ask too many ulcers.
Yeah, too many ulcers to survive.
We're simply here as a team, trying to be a team and wanting to help.
No one can predict the future, we are trying to prepare for possibilities. But our services as a board of health are critically necessary for the county. And we provide for the public welfare, so there has to be some value to that.
I mean, we, I know, like, serving the Amish community as an example, really don't, every time I send our staff out to do that, there is no revenue generated from that. We used to charge like $5 for vaccine, we generally just don't charge, it costs more to receive the $5 than to take the $5, like what it's worth. So, but the Amish ask us to come out, and we've got 13 kids, 13 times 5 blocks adds up really fast. So instead, we look at it more holistically. If they want that vaccine, which they invite us out to numerous locations, we just do it. I mean, so we, I mean, it cuts our face off a little with revenue, but.
And we also pay when people don't get vaccinated, then outbreaks occur in a close-knit community. As we referenced, the Amish did have an outbreak.
Yeah, so for protesas, if we said it has a lead to do that with partners, you know, if it's not protesas, it won't be cough, it's something else, you know. Whereas we're using smallpox, you know, things where you're operating parainforts.
I mean, unfortunately, we're one of those, you know, air quotes, businesses that we have a product people want, we just can't charge for it. In many cases, food licenses are different, sepsics are different. But again, we try to do that the most cost-efficient way possible, because, you know, if you're 70 years old and your septic goes bad, we hit you with $3,000 in license fees and permits fees, and the septic itself costs 10,000 to 25,000. It's pricing people out of their home, which is right here all the time. It's, all these different things are adding up over the past, you know, 10, 15, 20 years are just pricing usually the elderly community. And then the community who's got younger kids looking to move in, they can move because they can't afford to be here, the others can't afford to stay here, and so.
Well, they could put the money somehow, it's typically seeing, sharing prescription medications, not going to the physician, I mean, not having heat, whatever, they skimp on to stay in the home, so.
And even in others, the apartment well, I mean, we didn't solve the problem, but we got involved and helped.
And brought in significant dollars.
Right.
I had her present it, so.
Yeah, but we didn't get to keep any of that, to be clear.
But if we hadn't been as aggressive.
You guys work overtime.
If we hadn't been as aggressive as we were, that funding of millions of dollars would not have come to the county.
Correct.
And meeting, going out there and meeting with the people, and walking through the houses and seeing all, I mean, all the rust and all their pipes, I mean, how, I mean, it's one thing to read it in the Maple Leaf, but it's a different thing to go out there and see it, and then work with those people, and the people at state and federal level to get this straightened out.
Or read the Shreve Valley Times.
That, too.
There may be someone here. whichever one you read. But yeah, I mean, it's, and usually that's all, as I think someone mentioned, that's just stuff we do. You know, I know more about the department cemetery now than I probably ever should in my entire life. But that's what you find out, we go to meetings at nine o'clock at night, is, you know, what drives the community. So, if you're guys asking questions to Linda and Jerry, I'll let them not be in the hot seat in front of all of us.
No.
Sorry.
So, can we negotiate less than a five-year agreement?
We could do that, too, yes.
One year?
We can make it a one-year agreement.
Well, I mean, I think it depends what the rate is, too.
Open, yeah, I was gonna say, we're open to negotiating.
I mean, for $1 square foot, we'll do a little bit longer lease than I had. Do we know what our variable costs are for the space?
What do you mean by variable?
I think she means the CAM, like central maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, housekeeping, maintenance, utilities, like the things that go up because we're in the space. Toilet paper, you know, whatever it is that we're using.
We're actually trying to pull all those numbers together now that we've been in for a year.
Yeah.
We have a better feel on it, rather than trying to guess at them.
Okay.
So we're working on those numbers.
I mean, I think, I mean, I personally, I like to see data, and we really haven't seen anything. So I would like to see those values.
Excuse me?
Okay.
You want to get the one in the hot seat?
Yeah, go ahead. Classes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I interrupt real quick?
Yeah.
We just got a joint email from the engineers office saying, "Andy, it's expected to be at this meeting, came to the meeting, the doors are locked, couldn't get in, so we left."
CAM or whatever?
I think he left.
Was that?
I ran out there, should've got it.
It was prompted, or somebody must have unprompted.
Well, I mean, I think that's part of the conversation, too, is that we need to be able to access this building. We don't have, I mean, do you have a way to get in the front door?
You have to hold it open. Like hold the door open.
So I think that'd be something we'd want to see in the lease agreement, is the ability to actually be able to get in the front door.
You don't have.
Yes.
They don't have to hit the front doors.
The public.
Yeah, those keys don't, because the front doors are automatically unlocked at 7:00 AM and lock at 5:00.
Yeah.
But we're working on the key card.
They actually lock at 4:30, I think, now. Because at 4:40, Lynn couldn't get in at 4:30.
Yeah.
Why couldn't you get in at 4:30?
Or, so, yeah, that's right, because you came in right after Linda, so, or right before Linda, just sorry, right before.
I don't know when that changed, because it was originally set to 7:00 to 5:00.
The sheriff.
Because that was either chair stepping or something.
Yeah, because Brian and I had to open the door for.
Yeah, I mean, our meeting starts at 5:00, so we can't have it blocked at 5:00.
We're working on the key card system.
Okay, that'd be great.
So we can, when we know there's a meeting, we can change that, but, yeah, that's been fine.
So, I do.
There's no door now that is key-cardable anywhere on the first floor?
Yes, the back door is, you should have.
Yeah, the back end, that's behind everyone back here.
But the public can't come in.
By the loading dock.
Yes, the plant is only.
And the key cards work there?
Uh, the loading dock, we, I have, I don't, everyone has, I have access to the loading dock, yes.
Is that what the back door is?
No, it's two separate, loading dock is down this way, and back door is back this way.
And I believe the front door is key-carded, so we can.
I thought it was key-carded, I just know it doesn't work.
It was a decision that was made that, you know, the employee shouldn't be coming in through the employee door. So after hours, that would be the door that would be used in and out.
I know I've tried on Saturdays and Sundays, and that's literally what works on the weekends, and then after 5:00, it works, or after 4:30, I mean, it is 4:30.
Part of that was just to, you know, if the door, if somebody came through that front door and it didn't, for some reason, didn't close all the way because of pressure differential or something, we don't want the front door, you know, wide open.
Okay.
That's understandable, yeah.
But when we're propping the door open.
Yeah.
It's wide open.
And that's what it is.
As long as you remember to unprop it before you leave at the end of the night.
So I think the first thing that we need to do is agree on the square footage that we, the space that we want. Who do we
Communicate?
Communicate that with, and who says yes or no to that?
I would communicate that through Linda, and then we'll, the commissioners ultimately would be the ones to see.
The commissioners. Okay, and then, once we have that space number, and we know what is ours and what changes or doesn't change, then we actually send our flots to the commissioners via you.
Yes.
And the commissioners are the one that.
Will ultimately decide yes or no.
You've asked us if the price is negotiable and the length of the lease is negotiable, I would ask you, is the square footage negotiable?
I mean, I think, from what I get, from what you took, from what the board told me, the purple area, yes, outside the purple area, no. To meet their criteria that the last board meeting they told me.
I would still personally, Lynn Roman believes that we can give the purple up, but I don't think we should give up anything else for at least another year or so until we understand what O and M and
Yeah.
any other impacts might have on us.
Yeah, I think we can talk about giving up the yellow, but I mean, it sounds like ADP doesn't need it. I mean, if this yellow space was going to a higher purpose, I could see.
Well, ADP's not the only one that has something to say about the needs, we have something to say about that, too. And we need to get ADP out of the Opera House. We do need more space for them than what the purple provides. We would prefer to have the yellow and leave the purple as common space for both departments to use, that would be our preference. But that's why I ask, is the square footage negotiable, and that is your decision, that's not ours. I'm gonna give you my card, so you can get in touch with me. There you go.
I think.
For those who don't recall, Dr. Henderson, Lynn Roman, I, we're on a team that negotiates with Linda, so if you have comments, you can always send them to me. Because I don't want to have three of you talking offline.
Right, right.
I can disseminate them to the other two.
Okay, I want to go back, so the people that are in the Opera House, your intention was to put them where? ADP.
Do you want Jerry and Linda to sit back down and Frank can come up? I just, because he's trying to move the camera, and then the audio, the mic's right here, so, do you want to switch them?
That's a complicated one. So, over the last year and a half, it has been a back and forth, vacate the Opera House, don't vacate the Opera House, put everyone back in the Opera House, don't. So right now, we have three to four people up there. And the commissioner's office through Linda has indicated that the commissioners would like to vacate that because of the elevator. The elevator is very old, and sometimes it'll stop mid-floor, or sometimes it'll stop and sit there for 20, 30 minutes. People, we, to some extent, we've gotten used to it, you just kind of hang out, and then it starts back up.
No, thanks.
It's a little scary, but.
Just the first time, it's a little scary, right? After this, it's just routine.
Once you get used to it, it's not okay. So I think ultimately, there has been a long-seated goal to get out of the Opera House, because it is in less than.
Desirable.
Desirable, yeah, I want to be careful, because I think if it goes in the market here, I don't want to hurt the.
Looks great.
It, yeah, so I think that there has been a long-term goal to get out of there. I think that's where we are right now, is that the BOCC would like to vacate, I certainly don't want to talk on their behalf, but that's what they've communicated to me. And we unfortunately still have three to four employees up there, and we keep hardware up there, because we don't have a storage area in this building. We use that as an in-between area before we dole it out to various locations across the county. Laptops, computers, it's an open storage place. We used to use the setup conference room here, but we've slowly been dwindling that down to where it's pretty much just made. And then all of that hardware has been moved back into the Opera House from the annex, where it would be placed.
What drives our thoughts is that the estimate for the changes to the purple space is $45,000. And then, and the yellow space could be used pretty much as it is, except that we would have to add doors to keep, you know, to meet your HIPAA requirements and keep your area secure, but then the purple space would essentially go back to being more of a shared space. That was just our thought, but we do need a place for those guys to go, and I know two are supposed to stay uptown, but there are others that would need a place. And we can find a place somewhere else in the building. The building is not as full as some people think it is, there are some little spaces here and there we could utilize if we need to.
Okay, so we could take the purple out of our square footage?
It is out of your square footage, in terms of what I figured out.
When she was doing your calculations, she was not including the purple.
I didn't count the purple.
Oh, okay, thank you.
She counted the 53.
Thank you.
Right, but Adam, can we ask you to give us an impact statement of what would happen if we gave up the yellow space? And whether there would be an alternative model to function without that yellow space? And still have the collegiality that we're looking for in support of our employees that we're looking.
So I mentioned to Linda and Jerry, we'd have to do, at some levels, take out like this wall, or just put the red out.
But where are you putting those sanitarians, too?
Well, so, if that wall went away, whoops, battery's dying on this thing. If that went away, the, it would at least make this one big office, would be the thought. And because my office is also the conference room, so you'd have to do that, just to kind of get us back where we started at. But there are six sanitarians in here right now, there'll be seven by the time O and M, actually, eight. You know, my original thought I brought to all of you was if we did, if I had to make this work, since you have to make it work, they'd have to go from like home to job site and back home, and that would be indefinite. It would not be like today, tomorrow, next day, it would be indefinite, because we would not have those desks.
How large are those eight rooms in the center of that space?
They're only enough for one person.
One person.
Yeah, they're, without a desk is, without a desk is built, and the overheads, you'll get one person in each one of those. They're narrow, not so narrow that you can't live in one, but I mean, they're narrow enough where you're not going to put two people.
Are they eight by 10, or they're?
Uh, they're.
They're eight by eight.
Eighty-five square feet, apparently, so.
Yeah. Give or take, yeah, eight and a half by 10, something like that. But the desk shoots out about the size of this desk, maybe a little bit shallower than this.
Eighty-five square feet.
Yeah.
So it shoots out a little bit less than that, and then you have a desk that goes all the way around it, and you have usually a cabinet or something to the side. So you just have the middle area is all you have, it's enough for about one chair to go against the far side, and that's about it.
But along one of the walls, couldn't you have a divider and cubicle that?
They wouldn't be able to, so whoever's in the back of the office couldn't get out, with a better person going out first.
I think that's. And that means that all those offices would have to be modified, which would add to a cost.
So I, make sure, transparency, if our contract were to stop between preparedness, that grant, and Lake County, we would have to add, what, two FTEs, full-time management, so that adds two people, and then the three years, preparedness coordinator and accreditation coordinator, and you have money for a full-time health educator, which is part-time. So, I know the contract is locked in for like three years, but if anything, we want to be changed by that, you're gonna add multitudes of staff overnight.
You're right.
Yeah, I don't see how we give up that cube farm, I mean, giving up your office is one thing, I think we could work with that, but, I mean, I just don't understand how we could possibly do without that cube space.
Yeah, I just don't want to, apparently, lock you in until three days down the road, you have little decisions to make, you know.
Right, we do have that agreement, that's.
Assuming it works great, but, you know.
Yes, and then I totally forgot, that agreement is totally up in three years, and if the parties don't like it, that doesn't mean us, that means either party. We could end up back here with a lot of staff.
Our job is to make public health stronger, that's why Adam and I have ulcers and take the high road, but.
Lots of ulcers.
It is about public health for us in the November season, and I know I could pick on the head out there, but you may, for the state for us, but it's critical that you just, you gotta have some insurance, and we can't do without it.
So from this discussion, it doesn't appear, at least in my view, that that yellow. So from this discussion, it doesn't appear, at least in my view, that that yellow space is give upable?
Yeah, and that's when I brought this to you guys last, so I mean, literally last week. It's not, it's been four months, it's been last week.
And I unfortunately wasn't at that.
Yeah, so Dr. Jones, or sorry, Mrs. Jones was there for that meeting. You were gone, vice versa now. When I proposed a couple of different things, the main thing was if you guys decide you don't want to do a hybrid work schedule in six months, what do I do with the staff? And at that point, I told you, I don't, I don't have enough space to put them. And that was the conversation that was, well, we may not want this in six months. You have to sort of put them in case we don't like that. I, I don't have anywhere else to put seven, seven additional people. It'd be one thing if I was putting, you know, one person somewhere, maybe two, but I don't have enough for seven people to go somewhere else.
And I will, I think the hybrid schedule could be tried, but we have to then put lots of, for lack of a better word, tracking on everybody that's working hybrids, so we make sure that they're doing the job they're supposed to be doing. And I don't know what that costs.
Indirectly, two employees are your vital statistics. It's us, the same things. I like the way you're talking, but yeah, it's just a lot of stakeholders you have put in place. And our twenty-four budget is already submitted. So I mean, my thought would be if we could, you know, live free for end of the year, we could look at planning that we can't do in six months. We can't do it with grants the way they are. And if we buy some time and have the good graces, I know we donated boners to some of the government here down here in Georgia, through the health district, through the money you guys have. I hope we earn the respect to be able to, you know, buy a year and get planning. We need to do that. And I'd say we're all in the same boat. So let's work together, but I just think it's a little too fast, too early, too soon kind of thing.
Good. For the public record and for us to review, could you provide us with that? You said the contract for change in that one area was forty-five thousand dollars?
That was a quote from a contractor to do the things that ADP wanted to do, to make the space usable for them, the lunchroom, the purple.
Right. Could you provide us?
I don't have that. That would have been done by the maintenance department. It was just a quote. I mean, I can get it. It's a public record.
Well, there would also, if we want to modify the two offices down there, take out the wall, that would be whose responsibility? I mean, I can't imagine it'd be a lot of money for the wall, but...
I would say that because it's something to account for, the county getting additional space in the building, I would say that the county would cover the cost of doing that construction.
Because we have to move all the furniture and hope all the furniture will fit in the new space. So there's some expense associated with that too.
That's what we put up in our office.
The real expense is the doors. There would have to be doors. And they have to be card swiped, so they're fancy and expensive. And that was where a lot of, what you're seeing on the drawing, those double doors that are opposite the stairs, those aren't there right now. And there would have to be a door to keep the pub, because those stairs are egress in a fire. And so it has to be available to the public. So we have to make sure that corridor and that space that's now open, that leads into that yellow area, is secure. So we're going to have to add, and then of course, we have to cut through next to that, I don't know what that square thing is. It almost looks like a chimney or like when you look at a...
It's a chaise.
Okay. There's not a door. It shows an opening there, but there isn't an opening there right now. We'll have to put a door there for access to the bathroom for everybody, should any of this take place. I would just like to say, I don't want you to think we don't appreciate you being here and we don't see the value of you being here. We're really glad you're here and we want to work together.
So speaking of working together...
I don't think we could do a buck, sorry. So I don't blame you for trying.
Our budget has already been approved for our fiscal year. When are you really thinking that all this kicks in?
I mean, the plan was to try to do it for next year, but if it needs to be the year of grace, we can work it.
What is your fiscal year? Are you January through December?
Yeah, we're calendar.
Yeah, just the budget process is so far advanced and even our fee recovery is like a year behind.
That's not an unfeasible option of moving it out of here.
Well, that's good to know. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
None for me. Anyone else?
We appreciate you coming here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming here.
Not an easy spot to be on this side.
It's a little weird on this side.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Do you have any other items you want to discuss? Adam, are you going to move on to pull a comment?
I know if you wanted to ask Mr. Insanucci any additional questions from ADP or not.
I don't have anything. Do you have anything else you'd like to say, Frank?
Again, I can't thank you enough for all the help so far. We're willing to do whatever or nothing. I'm not the one who wants to kick you out of the conference room. So, yeah, just appreciate everything. Health has been a great partner.
We want to thank you. I know when we first worked through Tom Quaid, IT was always a challenge and it's done full circle. And I think it's top quality together with your first response and that service, absolutely. Yeah, we came down here, we were kind of shocked, so we worked it out great.
Great. And it, because I know there was one question one of the board members had, and I apologize, I can't remember who asked. So this was the original space that we divided ADP. The question was, how much, how much space was it? I don't know square footage, but it was three desks and one office was the original. Now, of course, we had no IT in the building, which would have been more catastrophic than us giving up four desks.
Did they have to take walls down or it wasn't done?
Yes, they did.
So walls, walls were already put up?
I believe so, because in the, in the plan that I had, this room here, the entrance was the opposite direction.
Well, the entrance was...
The entrance was over here originally.
Walls were taken down, walls were put up, it was reconfigured.
Can somebody do a public records request on one of these? Changes that have been done in the last year.
So we, so we are technically down four right now. So that's why when we talk about these things, it's not like, we didn't have any expectation for growth, but, you know, it's more important to IT in the building than it was for us to have one extra desk or three extra desks and one extra office, four technically. Because obviously, I think when I asked the question, what do we do with IT, it was they're going to be uptown. They'd drive here if they needed, if we had help, they'd drive back. So if I have an IT issue today at eight AM, they've got to drive here, then drive back. If I have another issue an hour later, they have to drive here and drive back again, if it can't be done remotely. If you're onboard new staff, they usually come in and help us with that. I mean, you're talking about a person doing almost nothing but driving probably on and off.
Yeah, self-serving sacrifice.
Right. It just didn't make any sense. For the county, honestly, as a taxpayer, I mean, I've been pissed off by it about that. I've been, I've been guns hot, you know, feeling over that. So I think it only made sense to have IT in the building, I mean, for all of us, not just for the health department, for the entire building.
Right.
And even if there's an open cubicle, we're happy, sure, sharing it, you know?
The only thing we ran into with that was, I know I talked to Frank about that and I talked to Linda and Jerry. So their stuff, I'm okay with them having access to our area for the mere fact that they're already HIPAA trained and they could access it online anyways. I'm not sure the vice versa can be said because they have access to things that we don't have access to and they have equipment that we don't have access to. So I don't want to, and we would have had, so I mean, just as a pointer, technically it would have been like this cubicle and this cubicle. The bottom ones, those would have been where they would have gone. Those are the two that were open, if that way, they were available and open. But right now, we, so all of, I think someone else asked, like those doors, like do we have keys to it? We don't do keys to any of the, any of the things except for the med room, because I didn't want physical keys floating around that we can't track. Now supposedly like double cut or something like that, where you can't just go like home, deep, bottom cut. But the old building, like everybody had a key to that building. I mean, feel like four or five sets of keys just to that building.
Yeah, remotely yours.
Yeah, so we, the original actual request to this building was that every office be key fobbed, like fobbed. So that if you want to go to your office, you fob in your office. That was not done. So we never got those fobs to get in, because I just don't want to give out physical keys. Because if someone leaves and I don't get their key, do I rekey the door? I mean, if that costs three, four dollars, that I'm also running on the county. If it's the HIPAA office, you know, an epidemiologist, it's got to be rekeyed if they kept their key. It's just, there's a plethora of things, you know, could have, would have, should have. But those are things that, you know, we look at, that maybe they don't have to deal with in other entities, in other departments that, for me, I'm sitting there going, you know, if God forbid something goes missing and I can't even say who had access to it, my, my butt's in this thing at that point.
So do all the interexterior doors have video, the secure doors?
There's a ton of video cameras here, but most doors have fobs, the outside doors, like when you go into ours and...
Right, but when someone uses their fob or not, that's being recorded?
I don't think inside. I think external, but not inside.
I mean, there's a lot of cameras bound over, I mean, I don't know where one of them's at though.
There are roughly a hundred and thirty cameras on the complex. Well...
There's only four in the bathroom, so you're fine.
I'm just kidding, Internet rag is going to spike that for weeks now.
No. Though, there is, there is not full camera coverage on the exterior. There are dark spaces throughout there, which we have put forward a, a quote for the commissioners to add the extra cameras where we...
So I think, oh, I was just going to say, I think as far as next steps, so we have a working group of Dr. Hendrickson and Ms. Roman. And I think you guys should probably go forth and start negotiating that rent number. Because I don't think we want to do that in an open meeting.
Well, I'll modify, I'll modify that by saying I think I can work with Dr. Hendrickson and we can bring back a proposal to this group as far as what we think.
No, but I just, I think perhaps you should bring that to the commissioner's office in some ways before you bring it to us, because you have to bring it to us in an open meeting.
Yeah, we need documents as well before we're able to really assess the whole situation.
And I guess all that I'll add is, although this building is a new building and it's been, you know, in many ways, it's a step up and an improvement, I don't believe that Tom Quaid, if he was involved, we never heard anything. Putting us sort of at a disadvantage as far as the development of the space. I will also tell you just from experience and having done a number of buildings, that no building is ever perfect. I totally understand no building is perfect, but we need to be able to at least look at how does this department look for the next two, three years? Five years even makes me a little bit nervous. We'll know more in a year as O and M rolls out, but we have to, we have to understand that this may not end up being the final space for us.
And realistically, I mean, if you just subtract the, gosh, cheers, one down. If you just subtract the purple space, we're at pretty much capacity when you add in the two sanitarians and one clerk. We would technically, if we really stretched it, we'd have one additional desk that would not be used. But I think I've, I've mentioned before, the desk that's up here, there's kind of like a little clerk area right there, there's a desk. That desk has a power slash, I think, IT cord that comes out of there.
Oh, right, yeah. It's like a V.
Yeah, my, my fear is if you put your foot on that long enough, you may do some damage or if you're hitting it with stuff. So we generally don't use that cubicle because of the giant truncated line coming out of there. So we just don't use it. But if I used everything else we had, we would have zero desk left.
Yeah, and if the levy doesn't pass, it's another one, two, three year.
That's a longer discussion.
Very quickly.
Right. I, I would like to at least, I think, be on record for saying that we will start working on this, but there is no way we will be ready with anything for at least a couple of months. I'm out of commission for a while.
Adam, when do you start working on the budget for twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five, that would be pretty much in January.
January.
Okay.
Because we have to get, we have to go to HSTAC, our illustrious presence is in the back.
Yeah.
We have to go to HSTAC in like March and we get all that.
Okay, so you kind of start working on it in January. So I mean, we sort of have to have a rough...
Have to have a number before January.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But as long as, and I don't know whether we have to officially tell the county that we're not, we're not negotiating anything for this time period, but it would be for...
I mean, I think you can, I mean, when I say you can do anything you want, I mean, you can, I think the two of you and myself, we can tell them anything we want. I mean, it's up to them to accept or decline.
Yeah, so I think if you could send an email to Jerry and Linda thanking them for coming tonight and then request, you know, as we requested, whatever documents that we've discussed.
And specifically that, whatever bond agreement that was, all its terms?
Right, information on how much the building costs, because that's where they're saying they're getting that eight dollars a square foot. So you have the bond agreement. What were the other things that...
It'd also be interesting to look at that contract for the one's area, just see whatever details they have and if there were...
Oh, for the forty...
Reviving cost quote.
Is that your valve, you're either sixteen dollars a square foot?
No, the purple, the construction.
Yeah, well, and any, you know what, any draft lease agreement they have, they say they have something that's maybe been inked with soil and water. I mean, I want to see their agreement. I want to know what the terms are on that.
Right. I just, yeah. That'll help us understand what kind of terms.
And I'll pull the state required Mr. Preparedness, Ability Operations, WIC and accreditation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. Anything else that we should request as far as documentation for us? I mean, we, I mean, we could ask about like the utility costs, because I, I mean, that was the other thing I asked about, were those variable costs for us building? I mean, whatever they have on that, which sounds like this thing, but...
Yeah, so at least five of you said these.
I mean, they should be able to show us.
And I think when I asked you, when you asked me last, I mean, the thing I mentioned there is, so I'm used to having, you have your square footage price, you have utility slash cam price, your essential maintenance fee. Those are all separate and then you get them as, and, sorry, combined is one dollar. But the other question, which I was remiss in having asked for the left is, does, does that dollar number go up? So right now, it's eight dollars per foot, does it go up to nine dollars in a year, ten dollars in a year?
Right.
Because originally, when Linda spoke to him, A, veterans wasn't being charged. It said veterans wasn't being charged. And two, there was no end to the, to our payment. It was a thirty-year payment.
Right.
Now they're saying it's a thirty-year payment. So I think both of those, those are, those are two different things that we were unaware of.
Well...
Thirty, thirty years, starting when?
I think from our first payment, it sounded like.
Well, but if they're done with the bond, right? So if they started paying, I mean, they must have started paying the bond before they broke ground, I would think.
So I'm thinking it's thirty years from when they started paying on the bond.
Right, then they're done with the bond.
That's why we need the agreement.
Well, I love the agreement for the bond. I'm sure it's online, so I'm going to just ask them.
Can we also ask them for the details on the, the generator? Because they didn't seem to be totally up on that.
Yeah.
But it covers what it doesn't cover.
I hear notes that it's a twenty-year bond.
The generator covers all parts of the building except for the HVAC.
She wasn't clear.
Yeah, project physics schematics.
So it, well, so I mean, I can ask them. I know it does, because everything else will help our brand. There was nothing that didn't run. Elevators ran, everything. No, they didn't, not others were beeping, I think, though, that day.
It's a specific HVAC omission.
Yeah, it's just HVAC that's not wired into, and I'm saying was, had they done it at the time, it was like four or five hundred thousand. Now it's a million dollars, eight hundred thousand, a million dollars. But my problem still comes down to, as I mentioned before, do the pipes freeze and burst?
Correct.
If it's ten degrees out, the power goes out. That's still my question.
Yeah, and he's paying for that one.
But that's, and, but, so the generator was covered, was not covered, and then the risk for, especially the cold weather and it's out? What areas?
Yeah, I mean, and so just using that last one, everything the building ran, nothing didn't run except for the HVAC. Every other item in this whole building ran just fine. The only thing, the only thing specifically left out is just the HVAC. Every other item runs in this building.
Has the generator tested monthly?
I don't know when they tested.
We should find out.
It should be a testing schedule.
Or, yeah, weekly even.
Yeah, we are, I think, believe.
My house was on...
The gas is just a huge tank or both a tank and a line?
It's probably a line.
It's probably a line.
Yeah, I would, I would think with a hospital, they have a gas line, but wouldn't know for sure.
Okay.
But that's probably a question to make sure it's not gas fad. All right, folks, are we ready for a public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to turn this thing off.
The magic timer.
All right, public comment. Do you want to give guidelines, Adam?
Yes.
No, I don't, I don't even have it.
Everyone gets two, everyone gets two minutes.
Everyone else, two minutes.
I just turned it off to turn this thing on. It's not on my screen. Everyone gets two minutes. I'll start the timer when you start talking. If it should beep, if the TV is volume up, it's when you're done. If not, I'll say something. We ask you to, to represent Georgia well in terms of how you speak and how you address everyone, in terms of, in terms of that public comment.
State your name.
And yeah, state your name and address is usually what is the request. So, what I would like to speak?
So, I would just like to drop this off. I'm going to leave that aside. If you don't want that, just let me know and I'll come back and pick it up. I have another minute.
We can take those though.
I think maybe the board.
Okay, I mean, I can say that.
Is that okay? Yeah, no, just give, just give them a minute.
I'll give them a minute.
I'm like, I'm going to touch it because I feel like I'm violating.
I know, I know.
Okay, any other comments?
Me, I have to go to the meeting, he's going.
Yeah, I'm going to go too. I know, I want to wrap it up so I can go to the meeting too.
So my concern is, and I would like to ask you guys to, please do not sign a contract until you get something covered for the HVAC, because if those pipes burst, then we're going to be in a lot more. because if those pipes burst, then we're going to be in a lot more trouble. And all of the grants that you had talked about, Mr. Graham, I mean, there's a lot of stuff here to think about. And so unless those are addressed, I don't know that we should be signing the contract with them. So, you know, like if, if I'm renting a house up, out, I am not going to rent a house with a toilet that doesn't work, or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So, they have some issues because they didn't think through things carefully enough, they didn't ask input from people who would be in this building, and so, and I don't even know that it was the previous commissioner, could have been the commissioner before that, because they started planning things before that. So, you know, when he said it was the previous commissioner, he wasn't specific enough, so, I mean, it could have been before that. Anyway, there's just a lot to think about, and I would like to, I don't know what your name.
Frank Anzuchin.
You know, he came in, and the first thing he said was, "Thank you for cooperating," and blah, 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 and that was the last thing that was said with the two people here, when they figured out you weren't going to give them the yellow. When they started, thank you, anyways, I got to go.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucia?
Yes, I, I think that whole thing was grossly disingenuous, and you guys were too nice. You brought a lot of good points, you asked a lot of good questions, but I mean, this is, the more that's revealed about this building, it's a boondoggle. I'm curious how much space you would need if it was built to suit, how much less space than what you currently have with all the wasted space. I'm curious what the commissioners would think if the whole operation was shipped off to land and property you own in Lake County, with a letter here explaining to the residents, ask the commissioners, why Georgia Public Health isn't in this building? Because I don't think if that, if anything happened, it's not just because Georgia Public Health don't want to be here, but how much do you have to take to be here, to serve the residents of Georgia County? They need to get their act together, I would gladly say that to their face, when opportunity presents itself. The HSTAC that is the meeting, you know, that was a big part of our last meeting, this whole situation, and we were in agreement that this whole thing, you know, is rent appropriate, yes, but you're so far apart, you're not even in the same ballpark right now, and that's, number one, needs to be addressed. Next HSTAC meeting, December 13th, I believe, is that, was that the Wednesday? At 6:00 PM, down the hall, I'll get emails out to you guys. And Section 3707.01B of the Ohio Revised Code, Powers of the Board, Board of Health, Abatement of nuisances, the Board of Health of a city or general health district shall abate and remove all nuisances within its jurisdiction. And then goes on to say what you may do, but it says that you shall abate nuisances, and I'm curious, I'll wait for you guys to get back to me on your interpretation of that, ORCA, and what we're currently doing in some nuisance abatement statistics.
Just to be fair.
But you see where I'm going with that, so I'll wait to hear that.
And his lovely wife, who spend every fourth Wednesday with me, and her family, and now the first Wednesday. It's their anniversary, you know.
Actually, soon.
My cake, nice eating out.
This is my anniversary now. I can have a quick thing, I just want to say that I wouldn't give them the yellow this year, like you said, I think you need to wait a year or two and see what's happening, and I do believe that, another thing you said, it was making sure it's just a one or two-year agreement, so, without, so. And maybe we should think about moving out, because this is ridiculous. This is my opinion.
Thank you.
The Honorable Mr. Anzuchin.
Here at the pleasure of the board, whatever you need.
Anything from our newspaper correspondent? The, I'm going to mention, just because it was, it was brought up from Mr. Alashev, what we're doing to share with people, to just mind, so we also provided a truck and a trailer to one of the agencies, this department who cannot afford a truck, cannot find a trailer within the price range, and I think 20-plus monitors, we've allowed other entities to borrow from us, because we had them, and it saved money for the county, which I have reminded certain people about, so.
How, how much do you think those donations were worth, if you're at a ballpark at, Adam?
How many monitors did you have?
I want to say, I think they want to be 25 or 30 total.
Eight, nine K.
And then I think the truck, I think private market value is like 15 nowadays, it'd be private 10 before, the trailer's got to be a 10, 15,000 dollar trailer minimum. So you're talking 30, 40,000 dollars, just ballparking, I mean, I don't know the exact age of everything, but if it saves the county money, taxpayer money, I'm all for helping people, I don't see why.
Did they go to the general fund, though?
Both departments would be going to meet the general fund, yes.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I'm just, I'm just asking.
Not my general fund, it's somebody else's.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
That's, that's good to know. All right, anything else, folks, we're ready to go? Next, regular meeting will be, what, 25th?
25th.
Okay, 20, October 25th at 5:00 PM. Hope to see you there.
We know we'll see you at this one.
All right, meeting dismissed, adjourned.
We have received, we have received our first part.
6:40.